Maybe she's stuck in traffic.
Could be. I'm going to record this just in case the livestream doesn't work. And I need to look at.
Ellen said she's joining, so hopefully she comes on soon.
Need to see if we have any public participation.
Fred, it looks like you're going to be eaten by a large flower.
I still can't get over that mustache. On point.
Okay, Chris Code's in.
I was told I had to shave the beard off because it made me look too old. But I put my foot down on the mustache.
There you go. Take a stand. All right, it looks like Ellen is on.
I am. I don't know why my video's not on, but that's probably fine.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little late.
Is anyone, is anyone expecting a Colleen Radek? Okay, she's in the waiting room, so I'll just leave her there because I don't know who she is.
Okay, are we ready?
I think Colleen Radek is a special education assistant in the district. I'm not sure. I think she is though.
Okay, well, we're not admitting other staff, just administration, so. Thank you.
Craig, are we ready to start?
Yeah, if you'd like to start, go ahead.
Okay, are we recording and live, so to speak?
We are definitely recording, yes.
Okay. Well, welcome to the Brexwell Bobby Heights Board of Education Regular Meeting at 6:00 PM. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business, and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as an indicated agenda item. The Board of Education, its administrators and special presentation guests will be permitted into the meeting. Will be permitted in the eating, meeting. All others must wash via YouTube live streaming. And this is a Zoom meeting, so let's go to the agenda.
And just a quick note, if anyone is watching on the livestream, you can submit your question for public participation on the Google form. So we'll be reviewing that once we get there.
Great, thanks.
Okay.
Okay, agenda item one A, Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have anything to display or are we just going to jump into it?
We're gonna go right into it.
All right. My pledge of allegiance.
Indivisible with liberty and justice.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Dozen.
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman.
Yes.
Mrs. Mack.
Kathleen, are you on? Are you? Maybe we can't hear. Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha.
You're on. Okay, great. Item number two, President's Announcements. Kathleen, did you have any announcements and did you want to give it a shot?
Can you hear me okay? I'm traveling. I apologize. Can you hear me?
You're, you're a little garbled, but we can make it out, so why don't you give it a shot?
I just want to thank everybody who is responsible for graduation.
You're, uh, you're, you're cutting out pretty bad, Kathleen.
We have a lot of great feedback. They gave us in organizing that and all they say, nothing.
Okay. Kathleen, you're really coming in garbled. I believe the just gist of it was a big thank you to all those who helped plan and execute the graduation ceremony recently. The weather cooperated. It was a wonderful event. Everything turned out, I think, probably as good as can be expected. So kudos to the staff and all those who were involved in planning it. Kathleen, if you have other things to say, maybe we'll, we'll catch you on the next meeting, I guess. All right, moving on, item three, Board Member Committee Reports. Financial Liaison Audit Committee, which I'm part of, and there's no, no new updates. Permanent Improvement Committee, which I'm also part of, and there's no updates on that, although we will be having construction update. So we are going to be getting an update under item five C, which is going to be an update on our construction of our new pre-K to five building, as well as an update on a structural analysis report we have done on the high school. You know, which has been an ongoing issue that we've been monitoring carefully, so we'll, we'll get into those details a little later. Board Policy Committee. Is that Fred?
Yes, we just completed the approval of our, our last policy update, so no, no report and we'll probably hit it again in the fall.
Okay, very good, thanks. Sustainability Committee, Ellen.
Yeah, I'm, no updates, just kind of waiting to see what's going to happen with school first, so.
All right, fair enough. Let's move on to item four, A District Committee Reports.
Oops, sorry.
Transportation Appeals, nothing. Kaiahga Valley Career Center, I believe Mr. Gilbright is on. Jim, are you with us?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Terrific. Well, thank you. It's a pleasure to see everyone remotely. Couple of quick updates for you. First and foremost, the high school is currently preparing their plans for distant learning in the fall. The current plan is for 100% of the instruction to be delivered remotely. However, all of the labs will be open beginning in mid-August for high school instruction assistant lab exercises and certification training. We're going to be ready to handle pretty much anything that comes our way, whether it's going to be in class or remote. But they're currently making sure that they're prepared to have, handle everything on a remote basis. With the eight different districts, it'll be a challenge to do anything pretty much otherwise. One of the current pillars of our strategic plan is having students participate in competitive educational events. Attached, you'll see there's a listing of the students that competed this past year and the placements and awards that they won. I'm not going to attempt to read that list, but it is attached, and I would just ask that you take a look and include it in the record. Moving on to adult education. The EMT students are continuing their skills and reviewing things for the, with their upcoming clinicals at the Cleveland Clinic, so we're working hand in hand with clinic to ensure they get the instruction and clinicals they need to compete, complete all of the hours for their EMT training. Secondly, the adult education program this year is struggling financially. It will not be cash flow positive. That's primarily, it's 100% attributed to the reduction in the nursing program attendance. We're working hard to get that corrected for next year, and Mr. Mangus has been charged with looking into two to three other Bell Cal-type programs that would support the adult education and spread that financial burden across, across multiple programs. Building construction continues and is progressing smoothly. They're almost done with level five. Getting down to levels three and four, that work has started. The glass wall at the top of the building has been the primary problem, so that's all being replaced. And that should all happen before school would start again, so that's all on track. And they're also starting next week remodeling and construction of the student clinic in room 511. Lastly, just looking at the five-year forecast. We passed that at the board meeting last month. It compares to the previous forecast negatively by about a million dollars in cash over that five-year period. That can be attributed to our treasurer's anticipated decreases in tax revenues, primarily from evaluation reduction due to the smaller growth and also from expected lighter collections. Our collections have been 99% for the last couple of years, which is just the side of unheard of. Additionally, he's fully expecting state funding to go down by approximately 10% for the next couple of years. And then also he's calculating in a reduction in interest earnings. The big concern is fiscal years 23 and 24 are showing negative cash flow from operations. So we'll keep our eyes on that. Continue to monitor that closely and make adjustments as that grows closer. Any questions or comments?
Craig, maybe you can pull up the student year-end awards, just to put it up there. And while that's being displayed. So Jim, should you have to go virtual, how do you navigate? So many of the programs require hands-on participation. You know, what do you do with that?
Well, and that's where the labs are going to be open. It'll be, my understanding is it'll be somewhat up to the instructors to communicate the lab schedules with their class, with their students. But yes, that's a challenge that until we really have a better handle on what each individual district is going to do. It's hard to answer that question entirely, Mark.
Sure. And financially, are, are you, are you looking at making any smaller adjustments now to try to bring some of those numbers back in alignment if they unfold the way many districts are anticipating?
Yeah, Mr. Mangus has already made a couple of adjustments in the administrative staff. So he's making some small tweaks today. You know, in watching Mr. Bergdahl's forecast over the years, the first three years are really spot on. So we're pretty comfortable with those. But yes, Mr. Mangus has got a very sharp eye on his financial program over there, so I'm pretty comfortable with the way it sits at the moment.
Okay, very good. Board members, any other questions?
This is Ellen. I did have one question. I guess I'm just, is there something in particular you think with the decrease in interest in the nursing program?
There's a lot of competition in that area. You know, it's something that we're going to continue to monitor. It hasn't happened in quite some time. So no, I don't think it's anything long-term, but we, it's obviously a concern. And the one thing we've been preaching and Dave's been talking about is how can we diversify that adult education program? So it's not so dependent on just the nursing program, which has historically been the cash cow.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay, Craig, if you want to switch back to the agenda. Okay, Safety and Security Meeting Report. I'm not sure who's, is anybody doing?
Yeah, that's, that's Fred and I, and we have not had a safety and security meeting since our last school board meeting.
Okay. Schools Foundation, Brittany.
The Schools Foundation has elected two new officers. Janelle Henning will be the new president of the Schools Foundation, and Petra Lazlo will be the vice president of the foundation. Brian, I'm sorry, Brian Bancheck will continue on as the treasurer. We have an outstanding role for a secretary. And at this point in time, they are currently evaluating their event structure for the year, so more details on that to come.
Okay, thanks. PSO, Fred? You're on mute.
PSO's last meeting was the first week in May, and they're done for the year until, well, done for the school year and done until the fall.
Okay, other board, other board member reports?
Um, I, this isn't really a report, but I had sent an email yesterday, or actually, I think just this morning in response to something I'd seen in the OSBA newsletter the other day. I talked to Van Keating, in-house counsel at the OSBA yesterday just about getting some guidance with respect to labor negotiations, and he offered to do a brief presentation to the board. It wasn't, it's not really about what they do, but advice about moving forward. And anyway, I just wanted to see if anybody thought that would be a good idea to do at either our July or August meeting. It's free, other than he'd ask us to pay for his mileage. Oh, go ahead, Mark.
I was just gonna say, I mean, I think it would be good to, to hear what he has to say. I don't know, July, August, I know Kathleen and I spoke a little the other day about timeline on this. You know, we're still, we're still pretty far out from negotiations. It might be better to, to start sequencing all the negotiating activities in a smaller, more compressed window so that we have more continuity. So if we, if we get an update in July and then we don't do anything for some number of months, you know, then some of what we're hearing can start to fade. So we should probably, as a board, talk about some, some sequencing and timelines on, on, because you know, the, the contract is up next summer, so you know, negotiations traditionally wouldn't start until, you know, January, February. I, I mean, you do homework before then, both sides would, would prepare, would be in preparation. But, so I think, from my standpoint, I think it's a good idea, but I don't know, July and August may be a little early, maybe September might be, you know, might be a better timeframe to start.
Okay, and I mean, I guess just from my perspective, not having been through it before, I like, welcome any sort of opportunity to get some guidance. What about Brittany, Fred? Kathleen, can you hear? I assume she's still on the line.
I believe she is.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ellen, I agree. I just, any, you know, tutorial and support and learning, sort of that process and that procedure would be helpful. I tend to maybe agree with Mark. I think maybe bring, bring that information in a little bit closer to a relevant timeframe might be, might be beneficial.
Yeah, I agree. I think it would be useful, and I think it would be better if we did bring it in toward when we're going to start kicking off our negotiations and research into them.
Maybe I'll ask them then to come to our September meeting.
About like November, December.
That, that's too close to January because he's, yeah.
Yeah, that might be a little late because, and some of this, you know, we can take offline and have a conversation about it because it, you know, it has to deal with negotiations, but we, we need to, as a board, I think we need to talk about, you know, some of the timelines and sequencing, because, right, with some new board members who haven't been through it before, will probably want to have some meetings where we review kind of past negotiations and kind of where we're at. And I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of details in the contracts that, that, that board, the board members need to kind of come up to speed on before we start, you know, getting into, you know, more of the conversation, if you will. I mean, you know, there's, there's getting some background and understanding kind of what's in the contract and what typically, you know, would go into the negotiations, and then there's, you know, how, you know, how do we want to pursue who's going to represent us, you know? Typically, you, you know, the board would engage legal counsel and pick somebody to help build a negotiating team and talk through, you know, with our administration and everyone, what, you know, what do we think we would want to see come out of negotiations? So, you know, there's a, there's a lot of conversation, I think probably makes sense to have with the board offline, maybe an exec session, and then talk about sequencing, and then from there, maybe we can figure out when we can bring, bring him in as well as, you know, legal too, because we'll, we'll need to look at who we want to have head up our negotiating team. So maybe we can have a, you know, maybe we could meet in, in August, throw an exec session on to just talk about, you know, what's coming up and do some planning. Does that sound?
That sounds, yeah, that sounds great.
Okay.
Kathleen sent a message that she agrees that somewhere around September for her input.
Okay.
So maybe Joel, Craig, maybe if we can, when we get to the August agenda, maybe we could put a marker out there for an exec session to start talking about planning for negotiations.
Okay.
Okay, any other board member reports? Okay, item five, Superintendent's Announcements, which will also include a special education audit presentation and a construction update, which will be both on the new pre-K to five elementary school as well as the structural report. And I believe we have Ryan from TDA and Eric from Shook on. I saw earlier on those areas, so Joel, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. I too would like to reiterate and thank you to all of those who are involved in planning our graduation. I think people were pleasantly surprised on how well it was and what a great ceremony it was. We, we got several emails afterwards thanking us for, for, you know, planning such a fantastic day. So I'm so proud of our administrative team that was able to pull that off and, you know, make lemonade out of lemons, and it really was a fantastic day. We were absolutely expecting the governor to come out with some guidance on Tuesday for this, for the opening of schools. He did not do that. It was purposely delayed. They are still working through some last-minute details. What we're hearing is that there's going to be a kind of a color code type thing, kind of like what you would see at the airport for security, if it's an orange or red security alert. They're talking about, you know, having almost like a green, yellow, and red type of scenario as to whether or not we can have school or not, depending on where this pandemic is in, in relation to our communities. Our opening plans, we're being told, have to be approved by the local county board of health. We're hearing from the local county board of health that, you know, that they're not going to probably tell us exactly what to do. So that what we're hearing from across the state is that they're pretty much going to leave it up to the locals to determine what school's going to look like in the fall. The idea that recommendations have come out to say that you have, requirements have now changed to guidance. So there's not going to be this list of requirements that we have to do. There's going to be a list of guidance that we have to do or that, you know, they recommend. So they're leaving it pretty open to the local districts to determine what that's going to look like. We are in the process of finalizing our plans as to what that's going to look like. We will have that out along with an additional parent survey that will come out here shortly saying, here's our plan. We had great survey data that we sent out about a month ago, and where parents let us know if they planned on sending their children to school, even if, you know, we were allowed to open. We had about 80-some percent of our parents say, yes, they were going to send their kids to school regardless. So that's what we're planning for. We have the, we have an option for parents that are not comfortable sending their kids to school, or for whatever reason, have a family situation where they have compromised immune systems or sickness that they don't want to have their children exposed to other kids. So we have a plan for that. Again, this will all be coming out here within the next week and a half. We were holding out to get the guidance from the governor, just so that we make sure that our plan is in line with what the governor is saying. But for all intensive purposes, we plan to open school, and that's going to be our plan. And, and everything that we have in place will align to that opening. And so more information on that to follow as we finalize those details and we get some additional guidance from the governor. We are told that that, that guidance is supposed to come out tomorrow. And so we're anxiously waiting, and we'll all be listening to DeWine at 2:00 to see what he has to say about that. So stay tuned for some additional information on that. And with respect to our guests that are on this meeting that don't necessarily need to stay for the rest of the meeting, I'm going to ask if we can switch the construction update and have that first, and then do the special education audit presentation, if the board is okay with, with flipping those two?
Yep, it's fine by me.
Yep. It's fine by me, although I, Joel, I have a quick question, just because I feel like this, the COVID is such like a swiftly evolving topic. I mean, it just seems, you know, I'm just wondering, I'm hoping that, you know, we had sent that survey out a month ago, and I don't know about you, but I feel like my views have changed in the last month, and I'm assuming other people's have as well. So I, I, you know, it sounds like, I just want to make sure we have good data and updated data before we make this announcement.
Well, so we, we talked about that a lot at Cabinet today, and what, you know, we went back and forth was, do you send our plan out first to say, here's what school's going to look like? And then have people respond knowing that they know the plan? Or do you send the survey out first and say, hey, you know, where's your head now based on, you know, what's going on with this pandemic? And then here's our plan. And so, you know, we've kind of talked through that a bit and determined that it might be beneficial for people to actually see what we are planning to do and then survey the parents based on that plan, because we can survey the parents and then put out our plan, and then parents might look at that plan and go, you know what? This isn't good enough, or it's not enough, or it's not what I anticipated, and now, and then they change their mind. So, you know, I think we landed as a collective cabinet team to say, let's get our plan out and then turn around and survey after our plan, let people digest it, kind of feel it, kind of understand what we're looking at, and some of the, you know, the dilemmas that we have, as much as we have tried to problem solve, I think, pretty, pretty good, every single thing that we, you know, have to deal with, transportation, lunch, all of those things. And then let people have, put out another survey to parents to say, you know, is this still, are you still planning on sending your kid to school based on this plan that we have put in place or that we want to put in place? So I think, you know, either way, we're going to survey the parents again closer to the start of school, so we make sure that we have that good data, Ellen. But I think they, this, you know, parents need to know what we're looking at doing too, and what, how we're being proactive in keeping their kids as safe as possible to really make that determination. Because we had a significant number of parents in that first survey that weren't sure. And so to capture those parents that weren't sure, they need to know what we're doing to either feel comfortable or not feel comfortable based on how school will look in the fall.
Okay, and then the teachers are on board, as far as you know?
We, you know, we, we sent out some survey data to our teachers. Most of them are like, yeah, we're going to come back. They, they have asked on some, just here and there about protection for them, and we're doing everything we can to look at that. We, we are constantly looking at different ways that we can provide, not, not only masks, but face shields or some type of shield on desks. We've gotten prices for all those. And, and just to put it in perspective for everybody, when we talk about budget that Craig will talk about later, you know, all of these additional cleaning and PPE and everything that we're doing. You know, David, who's the superintendent, I, I can't, I blank on his last name all the time. Superintendent of Akron, they put out their initial costs. They're spending $1.2 million on masks alone. And these are disposable masks that they say only are effective for four hours. So if your kids are in school longer than four hours, you have to give them two a day. So that's $1.2 million just on masks for Akron Public Schools. They're estimating nationally that any district, you're going to spend at least anywhere from $175,000 to close to $500,000, depending on the size of your school, just to have all of these extra cleaning protocols in place. So I, I think our public needs to be aware that, you know, what we're doing to open school, it, it does not come without a price tag, but we feel strongly that our kids need to be in school, and we're going to do everything in our power to keep them as safe as possible within reasonable budgets. But, you know, as our budget is being cut this year, as you know, you know, we're doing, we're doing what we can do, and I, I think that our parents need to know exactly what we plan on doing. And then they need to make that decision as to whether or not they want to send their kids to school in the fall.
Okay. Joel, just to piggyback on the question about budgeting and hands-free, not
hand sanitizer and PPE and that sort of thing, is there a threshold for at some point, when is it not cost effective to open up the building, provide the appropriate PPE with potentially half of the student body? Is that, has that threshold been looked at at all?
I don't know if we've done that analysis on that threshold. I mean, we have, we have three plans still and we're going to have three plans. Because depending on if it goes to this color code system, you might have to go to a hybrid. We could be all in. We could be, you know, there's so many unknowns based on what the governor is going to come out with. So we have to have all three models planned for. So we do. So we have an all in plan, which is what we're planning for, for the fall until we're told otherwise. We have a hybrid plan that would look at bringing half the kids back. Regardless, you still are exposing. So even if you bring back kids with the last names A through L on two days and M through Z, you're still exposing kids. There's still a cleaning element that has to be met regardless if you're bringing half your kids back or you're bringing all your kids back. And so your costs are pretty much going to be the same. So if I'm masking half the, half the kids two days and the other half the kids, it's the same number of masks. So, you know, we're looking, we're looking at that. It's not cost effective, the hybrid model unless we eliminate some things to make it cost effective or at least cost neutral. I don't think any of these plans are cost effective because of the extra PPE that we need to, to have school open at all. So.
Yeah. To your point, I think I saw that Akron was spending three million on hand sanitizer. So, so to add to that, yeah.
Right. And, and, you know, unfortunately people take advantage of the time. So the cost of masks and the cost of hand sanitizers and all of those things are probably a lot more than they would have been two years ago, but it is what it is. And we're, you know, doing our best to find the greatest deals, looking at some competitive pricing through some of our organizations that can get it a lot cheaper. So we're doing our due diligence around how we can get it as cost effective as possible, but knowing that we need it and we need to put extra measures in place.
Sure.
Well, and just to, you know, add on to, this is such a dynamic situation that unfolds and changes day by day. You know, some of the more recent data coming out is showing that a lot of the spread happens more through particles in the air versus surfaces. So, you know, who knows where that's going to end up, but you know, hopefully we have a little better guidance. So, you know, if we have to spend X number of dollars on some type of regular cleaning, you know, maybe in a month or two, we find that that's not effective spending. If they're finding that, you know, it's not picked up so on surfaces as much. So maybe we just need to monitor and, I mean, to Ellen's earlier point, right? You gotta put something out somewhere. And, you know, we're, we're in June and, you know, the world, you know, things change in a month. Things could change again in another month, you know, month and a half, all the way up to school open. So, you know, probably being flexible is probably a really important attribute to have for everybody.
Absolutely. Okay, I'm going to turn it over. We're going to, we're going to do the construction update first. I'm going to turn it over to Eric and Ryan. You guys, you decide who wants to go first.
And just tell me which one, which document you want me to put up, please.
I'll go ahead and start if that's okay with you, Ryan. And you could put up the BBH monthly update memorandum, June of 2020. All right, looks good. I see it on my end. Everybody hear me all right? Yeah, although it'd be virtually, it's very good to see everybody again. So I'll try to provide a quick summary of this for everybody. And then more importantly, after I get through that, we could open it up to questions. And starting with the work progress, where we've been, we've been pretty busy playing in the dirt for the past couple of months. Big thing here is trying to get the building pad. And essentially that is getting a level surface so we can start building our foundations on. So as of last week, we achieved building pad and started digging foundations yesterday. So first concrete truck showed up to the job site this afternoon and foundations are being put in. In addition to that, we've been working on utilities. So that's all your sanitary and storm work. So controlling water in and around the building and then controlling the sanitary waste going in and out. So we've been running a lot of that pipe around. And then looking ahead to the next month, we'll be busy doing foundation work. And we'll be starting mobilizing a lot of our mechanical electrical plumbing contractors within the next week. They'll start running some of their underground conduits such as the ways they get electrical feeders underneath the ground. And then our plumbing contractors will start running some of the underground work within the building pad. Schedule of our May schedule update had us tracking 11 calendar days behind schedule, but don't let that alarm you. A lot of that was due to the wet weather that we experienced in April and May. And thankfully, mother nature has given us a break the past three weeks. Didn't timeout well for me putting a lawn in at my house, but it was very good for the job site. So we, we end up, we were able to make a lot of ground up this, over the past three weeks. So we expect better news out of our, our June update. We also did a couple of other things in combination with good weather. We stacked a lot of activities and then our site work contractors was working Saturdays and 12 hour shifts to try to take advantage of the good weather when we did get it. I hope you guys enjoyed some of the photos that I include with the update. Some of the aerial shots, we have a drone come in once a month that takes aerial photos and videos. So I'll try to keep those with every monthly update. And if you guys need more photos, I'm more than happy to provide that. Moving down to project financials, as you can see here, there is no change in the project financials in terms of the GMP change orders against the GMP. As you can see, typically the billing cycle, as you're, you're getting out of the job, you're getting started, it tends to slow, but then you'll quickly see as the big materials, your HVAC equipment, the high dollar items start arriving on the job site, you'll start to see the billing start increasing exponentially. Safety, we've, we run a pretty tight job site in addition to our team on site paying close attention to safety. We've got a safety department that visits the job site once or twice a week. It's just good outside eyes on the work that's happening, making sure everybody is following the rules and regulations. And then in terms of highlights, only new highlight that I've added for this month's update, as you can see, we had the different permits on there. And then I've added the plans for a groundbreaking ceremony. We've just been doing some brainstorming with a lot of what's going on in the world, kind of ensure exactly what we could do. But whatever decision is made between Joel and the mayor and the rest of the team, we're willing to accommodate. We're going to assist in any way that we can. Although it not be the best timing for this due to everything going on, we're going to make the best of it. So I guess with that, I'll turn it over to questions if anybody has any or any kind of further update from Ryan.
So that, that date for the groundbreaking has been set. It's going to be July 21st at 11:00 AM, pending the weather is okay. We're in the process of getting a formal invite out. It's going to be invite only. Just so, just because of the site and there's so much construction going on and so many vehicles that we have to kind of limit the the access. So it unfortunately is not going to be open to the public. We do plan to have kids involved in it. We have some information going out to elementary parents that will be going out next week to let them know about the ceremony and the mayor right now is currently looking at the invite just to give it his blessing. And once we have it, it will go out to the people that we have on our guest list and we'll get information out to the kids. But that's our current plan right now and we're, we're excited to announce that.
Joel, just a quick question about that invitation list. Is that also being extended to the mayor of Broadway Heights?
It absolutely is. I've already been in contact with him and will be sent over to his city council as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Ryan.
Yeah, we could, as far as the construction update goes, I think Eric handled it really well. The only other thing is behind the scenes, there is an extensive amount of administration that goes along with a project of this size. Be it review of submittals and stuff of that nature and all of that is taking place now in the efforts to line everything else up for the next coming months. So that as materials are needed, all that stuff is made available and is ready to go. So back of scenes, there's a lot of work going on as well. So that being said, we could talk about the structural analysis that was performed.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. I just, I wanted to, one question to Eric or to you, but probably more to Eric on the construction of the new building. So are we seeing any impact either on the labor front or the construction supplies front from the pandemic?
As we sit right now, we are not. We are closely monitoring that. As everyone, there's been a lot of rumors around the industry of impacts related to this, but as of right now and in the near term, we are not seeing any direct impacts to the supply stream. And then also the labor force. Ironically, through all of this, with all the guidelines in place, workforce kind of maintains status quo and we were able to keep plugging along as we anticipated.
Okay, great. So Ryan, we'll throw it back to you. Just, just to clarify for people looking at the screen. So the, the monthly update for June was what Eric went over. We also threw the May one in there just for reference for anybody on the meeting that wants to go back and look at what last month's update was. And then Ryan is going to walk us through the high school structure report. And there's a second document because the same firm we used did an analysis nine years ago and, and that other document is the the nine years ago result. So Ryan, I'll throw it back to you.
Yeah, in a nutshell, we were hired to analyze some apparent conditions within the existing high school where it appeared there was some potential structural issues with some of the floor slabs in a handful of the rooms near the front of the building. As everybody I'm sure is aware, there have been ongoing issues over at that building for quite some time. So what we did is we did hire a structural engineer, Isaac Lewin and Associates. Isaac Lewin specifically, the owner of the company was heavily involved in this process. He had also performed a similar sort of report back in 2011. So that gives you an indication that this isn't something new necessarily. And the gist of what everybody has found is way back in the day when the building was originally built, there's a process where you go in and build up your slab or build up your platform that you're going to build your building on, your building pad. And it's apparent in what's been found that that building pad hadn't been established in a manner that you typically like to see. It didn't get the compaction rates that you typically like to see underneath a floor slab. And so there has been some differential movement beneath, beneath some of those floor slabs. So several steps back, a couple of analysis have been done. They had found similar sorts of information. There had been some borings done back in the day that had indicated that there was some ground settling underneath the floor slabs. And so when we got into this process again, we did hire a geotechnical engineer, solar testing labs to go out into the building. They core drilled through the concrete floors and they use their testing machinery to test the soils that are beneath the floor slab. What they found essentially is that the material beneath it was not at optimum moisture compaction rates, which is what everybody pretty much expected to find. They, with their borings that they took, they did not find any significant difference between the bottom of the floor slab and the dirt below. So there were no signs of large voids beneath, beneath the floor. That isn't to say that there aren't isolated incidences where, you know, there might be a larger void, but they didn't find anything that caused great concern or alarm in that, in that way. From back in the day in 2011, when this, the initial report was done till now, there hasn't been a dramatic change in the amount of movement in that floor. It has moved since the beginning of when this building was originally built till now. Anywhere from a quarter inch to two inches, it's dropped inside some of those rooms. So you just see that, you know, as the ground settled, the floor slab settled as well. The good news in all of this is that there is no apparent signs that the primary structure has been affected by any of this. All the footings seem to be intact. There's no stress fractures in the exterior masonry or apparent repercussions happening through the exterior walls or roof system. This appears to be just purely isolated to those floor slabs. There are a couple of ways to approach this. Isaac outlines them in the meat of his analysis. Essentially, one of them, since we're not getting the compaction rate that we want below that slab and you're, you're not able to go back in at this point and compact that slab, one method is to remove the floor slabs in those rooms, remove all the partitions, do all that work. Put in a series of piers, I believe six feet on center, that would be worn down to they call it virgin soil or virgin soils where it's, it's got optimum compaction. And then you build in a new structural floor slab. Very expensive for the handful of rooms we're talking about. It's half a million dollars plus to do that, that type of work. That is considered a long-term permanent solution. That would be one where you have a structure that's essentially built down to something that was solid. And you shouldn't expect any movement after that. The alternative solution, which has been done in various locations within the building up till now is it's called mudjacking. Essentially what they do is they go underneath the slab and they pump a hole of some form of material. Back in the day, it was a lean concrete mix or grout type mixture or something of that ilk. But nowadays they use polyurethane foam system. You've probably seen it, they do it with sidewalks and stuff all the time residentially, but in a big building, you can do this for the floor slab. This work has been done. The gymnasium is a perfect example over there at the school. They had done it in the gymnasium years back and to date, you can't really notice much of a difference in that floor. So while there is the potential, the mudjacking system could potentially sink. The cost of mudjacking is probably between, I think he estimated around 57,000, but it's probably a little proud of that. But it's in that 50 to $100,000 range as opposed to the $500,000 range. So if you got into a situation where, you know, five years down the road, you needed to come back in and supplement a bit, you're still not spending the $500,000 and you're essentially, you know, taking that large cost and you're breaking it down a little bit over the lifetime of the building. The other thing to mention with the system that I mentioned, the first option, another part that makes it somewhat not as palatable in my opinion is that if there are any utilities beneath that floor slab, you essentially have to treat them like they're hanging underneath an elevated deck. So you end up having to add supports for the piping and stuff of that nature as well. Because if the ground continues to settle and there's a pipe beneath the floor slab, the, the, the ground that's supporting it would essentially drop and there's the potential of failure of that, that pipe. So if you go in there and you do the mudjacking, essentially it builds all of that up and it fills it in and holds everything in place. So. Does that make sense? Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. You have a question, Ryan. So just so I'm clear. What we're saying is, is that the, the exterior walls that are load bearing, those are on solid footers and, and we're not seeing any signs of structural problems with the load bearing walls and it's really the bottom floor of the building that in some areas is dropping.
That, that, yes, that's correct. If you walk around the outside of a building, I mean, that's the easiest way to validate that for yourself if you have any concerns about it. If the, if the footings were dropping, you'd expect to see stress fractures in all the corners. You'd expect the roof. You'd expect to see some pull away of some of those members and stuff like that. Windows typically fail because those are weak points in that exterior skin. So you expect all those weakest points of the building to start showing signs of failure and there was nothing that we could see in any of those locations. The only place, there is one location on a wall inside the building where a piece of masonry had started to drop, but that was a condition where it was just a purely an applied masonry pilaster or something to hide a piece of wall and it was resting on the slab that was dropping. So it wasn't a foundation issue. It was related to the floor slab dropping in that location as well. So.
Okay. And you mentioned that if you were to do the more expensive permanent repair and put the the piers in, the socially distanced six foot apart piers.
Yes.
That you would have to look at utilities and if there's utilities, you'd have to hang them. Don't we know if there's utilities under there? I mean, aren't there drawings? Aren't there, I mean, that buildings?
There are, there are and there's storm and stuff of that nature. There are. There are. And there's storm and stuff of that nature. The thing that we, storm piping, the thing that we don't know is to what extent they're supported or not supported and what that is. Because from construction side of things, there's something called routing. So when they're routing these pipes below the slabs and stuff like that, they have some liberty to move things, you know, this way or that when they're installing it, if it's not critical to dimensional items above. So for example, you're running to a sink, you know where the sink is in the wall. You don't necessarily have to run along a certain path to get to that sink inside the, you know, underneath the floor slab. So it's almost a condition, I think, where you're starting to put, we assume the worst. And when you start to pull out the floor slab, you'd have to go through and validate and verify, you know, where these utilities actually are sitting and their conditions. Because once you open that up, then, you know, it's basically a bunch of unsupported pipe underneath there. Granted, all that being said, you'd end up with essentially a completely new floor system and all your utilities beneath the floor slab will have been checked and verified. So I mean, it's a better solution, but it's way more expensive.
So for the interim solution, the mud jacking, what's the criticality to do that sooner rather than later? If the floor continues to drop and there are utilities underneath it, you know, are we, is that kind of a ticking time bomb that the floor could drop enough where we could have utility issues?
I can't say for certain on that one way or the other. There was not indication that there had been significant drop in the floor slab since 2011. So from that point till now, while it might be creeping a little bit, there was no signs that is significantly changed. There are probably more signs of cracking in the floor and things like that that have happened. But some of that is just the fact that some of these areas have had depression and they've been unsupported for some time. And so some of that has happened. So we can't say for certain that it's going to be something that's dire. It's something you should do at some point. I mean, obviously, this is not something that sits on forever. But there was no signs that this was a safety concern and there were no signs that this was going to result in utility failures.
Okay. You're probably aware, but you know, we have an ongoing facilities priority list. So, you know, part of the outcome of this process is going to be to figure out where we spot this. You know, the permanent fix at the cost and the fact that there's no safety issues. I suspect the board is not going to be interested in pursuing that right away and that that wouldn't fall, that wouldn't land high on the priority list. But the more intermediate solution to do mud jacking, I guess. And I guess we're still waiting on the official estimates. Is that correct?
Well, you can't really do the official, official estimates until we get direction. Because we'll have to reach out to a handful of bidders to do that. And we don't want to obviously leave them down the wrong path. Isaac, when he was compiling his last portions of his part of the report, he did reach out to some companies that do this sort of work. And so these aren't pulled out of the sky. These numbers were based on a contractor's opinion of what this work would take. The thing we don't know and the reason I say we don't have hard bids is as we're going through and looking at these offices and stuff like that, it's going to be as a group determining how much we want to spend on basically beautifying spaces. As you lift up this floor slab, you're going to have some walls that probably, you know, you might want to touch up the bottom or adjust the wall base or things like that that you might want to do. I want to make one other quick point. If you were to ever consider the more substantial option, that might be something you want to pair with a more significant renovation too. That's something that if you're going to be disrupting that area of the building, you know, schools change over time and sometimes you want to do a renovation to a section of the building. That might be the optimal time to do that sort of thing rather than trying to just get it in there, build walls that might not be relevant for you in five years. That'd be the only thing I say. Or take this opportunity, if you're having to rebuild those walls, to start looking at, you know, how you might want to adjust that or make sure that it's your permanent long-term solution. I just hate to spend money now and then renovate those spaces down the road and rip out walls. You just go that sort of thing.
Right. And I'm not, the numbers you just shared, right, just right now, I don't recall seeing in the report. So.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to ask. What are the numbers?
There was, the cost for the substantial, option one was approximately $570,000. And the other option was, I listed, I think, at $57,000, option two, which was the mud jacking. That was sent out as a separate email. I believe Chris might have that. I don't know if that's in these particular documents that are up there, but it was $57,000 for that second option. Neither one of those considers, just those kind of little ancillary things like, you know, wall base and stuff like that. We just have to think how far you want to go with those sorts of things. Or not.
Is the temporary option just stabilize the pad? Yeah, the pad? Or is it to actually raise it or?
Option two would raise it. So essentially, it's jacking. So essentially, what you do is you go in there and you think of some of that, like that spray foam that you use around, you know, openings in the outside of your house, how it expands. It's got, yeah, you gotta be careful with it. It's got structure to itself. It's got a force that built up. So when they put it under there, it's a pressurized system and it essentially pushes up on the floor slab and it brings it up. That's what they did in the gym back in the day when they built that up. I believe that it dropped an inch or two or whatnot when that problem came up. So they went in, they did that mud jacking. And now you look at the wall base, there's only an eighth of an inch below it. And in a wood floor system, that's typically what you want, is an eighth of an inch to the floor. So it looks like it's doing what it was supposed to do. It looks like it helped. Solar Testing Labs' report indicates that they feel that the majority, if not all, of the sinking has occurred already. That isn't to say it couldn't happen. It isn't to say that you couldn't have some sort of washout. But they felt fairly confident, based on the information they found, that the bulk of your issues is already taking place.
Yeah, that's my, kind of what I was curious about is, I read that. And so if we do that mud jacking, is that going to stabilize it for some period of time or for a longer, you know, what kind of period of time are we talking about? Any idea?
I hate to be that guy. I can't put a definitive on it, you know? It's one of those things. It's the dirt. To give it some sort of a comp, I mean, you can look at the gym. It was something you did, you know, five years ago or 10 years ago, whenever that took place, and it's helped. So in theory, it could hold forever if the depression has stopped. If there is some sort of a break in a water line, you know, from your roof drains or something, that was causing you guys problems, but you took care of that on the outside of the building. But if there was something like that that created some form of washout, you could see some more dropping of that soil. The thing that you could do though, is you could go back in and pump it up some more if that became an issue. So you have to, or pump up one room that might have a little more settling than another. It's something where you have a little more flexibility and the cost is considerably less.
Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, if money were no issue and disrupting an entire section of the building were no issue and all those sorts of things, the optimum choice would be to do option one. But it's $570,000 plus versus $57,000 plus. So it's tenfold.
If we were to do option one, could we bundle new tennis courts in the basement and then we could do two things at once?
I like the way you're thinking. Water was our issue with the tennis courts. It's, yeah, I like that.
All right. Any other questions for Ryan or Eric? Okay. Well, thank you guys for joining us. We'll view the rest of your evening back unless you want to stay with us. You're welcome to enjoy the party here. If not, you guys can have your evening back and I'll turn it back over to you, well.
Thank you so much. Sounds great. Good to see you, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to do a really quick presentation on our special education audit that we conducted back in May. And so Craig, you're going to pull that up there. Thank you. All right. So we're going to start off. So as you know, we hired a company to come in and do a third-party audit of our special education services to address several questions and things that we were looking at in terms of services, if we provided a right continuum and just kind of give us an overall sense of, you know, how we're doing with our special ed program. And so they came on in district and met with groups of parents, did a parent survey. They talked to every single staff member that is involved with special education. They also spoke to all of our building administrators, looked at IEPs, looked at a bunch of our data that we have in terms of our special needs students and put together a pretty comprehensive report on what they saw based on all of that collective data. And so this is just going to be a high-level kind of overview on what they saw. Some of the things that they saw that they were very proud of and said that were great is that we have a very supportive and dedicated staff when it comes to our special needs staff and the people who work with our special needs staff. There was ample evidence of instructional best practices that they saw in the classrooms when they visited because they did do classroom observations. We have very good inclusive practices in our extracurricular activities. So it's very evident we have kids with special needs that participate in our band and our gymnastics team and in our swimming team. And so they thought that was amazing, how many kids we have that actually are part of those teams and feel part of those teams. They said that our staffing levels were appropriate. That was something that was questioned, that we didn't have enough staff to staff our special needs students and their needs. But they had indicated based on that data that our staffing is appropriate. Our achievement data for students with disabilities is on par or exceeds our similar districts. So they looked at what the state identifies as our similar district and compared our data to the data with students with disabilities. And so was either equal to or exceeded the data in our comparable districts. And our community embraces our kids with special needs. It's evident through the conversations that they had with parents, through the programming that they see that we have at schools and just the acceptance of our general ed population and how they embrace our kids with special needs. So we've identified, there was definitely some themes that came through in that report. So there's definitely some areas for continued growth. And so these are the four areas that, you know, we know as a district, we need to continue working through when it comes to working with our families, our staff and our students with special needs. So relationship building came through loud and clear. Effective communication, I will add that word to that. Compliance and procedures and data-driven decision-making. So those are the kind of the four themes that we saw throughout the report based on some of the recommendations that they've made. So I'm going to take each one of those and just kind of talk through them. Relationship building, there was definitely, they said, an attitude that they saw in us versus them. So if it's teachers versus administrators, administrators versus central office, there was definitely that theme that came through and kind of that attitude that, you know, we're being told what to do and we're not working collectively together to come up with solutions. So we need to definitely address that us versus them and become a we. We need to reestablish trust with all stakeholders. Over the years, there's been a lot of trust that has been broken with our teachers, with our staff, with our parents, not feeling like there's follow-through. So really, there's going to be a need to reestablish that trust with all of our stakeholders. And then the need to work as a team. There were decisions being made. They indicated an isolation and really not working as a team to collectively come up with what those clear expectations are. And so we need to make sure that we're working and communicating those clear expectations and develop protocols to engage the stakeholders on a regular basis to get feedback. So we need, there was not a feedback cycle or circle. And that really helps with building relationships that, you know, you can reach out to a group of people, ask for their feedback and then follow back up with that same group. So the development of those protocols and follow-through with district plans and guidance. So if we say we're going to do something, we need to make sure that we're doing that. And that really helps with the trust building. And so all of these things will help mend and build those relationships back up with staff, administrators and our parents. The next area of focus is communication. Again, follow-through on received communications. There's definitely was some thought through our parents and through our staff that if they asked questions, there wasn't timely feedback. So, you know, developing a protocol and how we follow through with that information that is coming, you know, into central office. How do we make sure in a timely manner that we follow through on that communication? Even if it's getting back and saying, you know what, I don't know the answer right now, but let me get back to you, you know, on this date. And be proactive and anticipate situations. There was definitely a sense in the report that we are reactive rather than being proactive. And so try to anticipate what could some problems be? And let's have a plan to anticipate those situations so that we can be more proactive than reactive. One of the things that came through too is that there was a lot of decision-making that was coming from central office rather than at the building level. And we really need to raise the professional efficacy of our building level administration and give them the power to make decisions. Who knows the kids better than the building principals and the staff that is working with those kids? And really, those decisions need to be made at that building level. And the principals need to feel empowered to make those decisions and be that district representative when they are sitting at those IEP meetings. Development of monthly parent newsletters and resources. We learned this from the parent group that met with Ellen and Kathleen and myself on a regular basis that, you know, they felt that there wasn't enough, there wasn't enough resources out there. It wasn't a place that a parent that has a student with special needs had a place to go. And so the development of a monthly parent newsletter and continuing to put resources on our websites for parents to go to and have a place where they can, I think will be very important moving forward to address some of the issues in the report. And the development of regular special education staff meetings to ensure consistency among buildings. You know, this is going to be very crucial as we, you know, start the process of bringing three staffs together into our new elementary school, that we are all on the same page now so that when we come together in that new building, that we have protocols in place that we're all using. So this is going to be really important to make sure that we establish monthly special education staff meetings to ensure that there's consistency before we move into our new building. In terms of compliance and procedures, we need to create a special education handbook for parents and staff that should have checklists, like what do you do if a child is newly identified? What is the protocol that we're going through? What is the communication plan that follows letting a parent know that a child has been identified? How are we going to service? And then just some protocols to create to say, how do you make decisions on what are the best services that are needed for those special education students? We don't have that. And so I think a lot of our inconsistencies that the report indicated as well as what we see on a daily basis have come from not having a standard, this is how we're going to do, this is how we're going to do business. And so, you know, having, creating that special education handbook, putting it out on our website, making it available. So if parents have questions, they can say, this is what is going to happen if my child gets identified and being very transparent about that. We need to do some additional professional learning on IEP compliance for staff. In the small sampling of IEPs that the company looked at, there were definitely inconsistencies in writing SMART goals or writing goals that were able to be measured at all. We need to do a better job of writing IEPs that have goals that can be measured. And teachers need to, as well as our principals, need to understand what an measurable goal looks like. So need to definitely do some additional professional learning on IEP compliance for that. And the development of transition plans and a district schedule for vertical transitions. One of the most difficult things we see is when, you know, kids with special needs typically have more difficulty transitioning from buildings. And in those transition ages and currently in our situation, going from fourth grade into the middle school and then from going eighth grade into the high school, there needs to be a development of a plan and a schedule. So those vertical transitions, we build time into staff members' schedules that they can sit down and have a real critical conversation about the student needs before they move into that next building. Because our kids get very comfortable in the buildings in which they're at. They love their staff. And so the receiving staff needs to do a better job of understanding what those needs are and how can we make those transitions, you know, less traumatic for our students. And the last area of focus is data-driven decision-making. You know, some of the reasons, being in full transparency here, we have so many kids on settlement agreements is because and they're attending other schools is because we didn't have the data to back the progress that they were making with us. And so this has become, you know, a real urgency to make sure that we are using data to make those decisions on where kids are, what kind of progress they're making, really beefing up what we're doing with progress monitoring. And it can't be just, I think, I feel, or I see this, you know? What is that hard data that we're actually looking at and developing protocols for progress monitoring? ESY, so that's Extended School Year Services, that some kids who demonstrate regression are entitled to have over the summer so they don't regress. You know, kids can stay the same and make no progress. That's different than regressing. We don't want a child at the end of a school year or after a break, we don't want them to regress. We want them to either stay the same or certainly the goal is to make progress. Our ESY decision-making, we do not have an ESY decision-making tree. So granting ESY services to kids who maybe don't show actual regression, but just don't show any progress. Those are different services. And so creating and making those decisions with data to really show that if a child qualifies for ESY services to really show that if a child qualifies for ESY services over the summer. And we need to make staffing decisions based on data. It can't be that, you know, this person needs another aide in their room or that we need another special ed teacher because. It needs to be, why do we need it? And what is the data behind? What do our numbers show? What does the IEP say that requires us to add a staff member or decrease a staff member? What do our numbers look like? A constant monitoring of what that looks like to make those staffing decisions. And we have, we have in our district an RTI process. And when it was working with Fidelity, it was working well. And we used that data through that process to determine whether or not a student needed to go on for, to have a full ETR or to have a full MSF done. And that process, while still in place, is not being implemented with Fidelity. So we need to relook at our RTI process, look at the data that that process is providing us to make good decisions on whether or not we should determine to go and suspect disability or is a child just truly struggling? And a different method of instructional practice might help that child, and it's not really an identification issue. So to relaunch that program with Fidelity is something that we need to look at doing. So our plan implementation is-
Joe, I have an extra question, I'm sorry. Will you mention ETR and MSF? Can you clarify what those acronyms stand for?
Oh, okay. Multi-factor evaluation. Okay, so that's the process where we look at, we do different assessments for the student to determine. And the ETR is the report that we get from those, that multi-factor evaluation is to look at that information that we have on the students. So the plan implementation, to take the report that we received from the company, you know, they gave us 27 items of things that they suggest that we implement. So the first was to hire a new director of special education or a new people services director, which you will be acting on this evening. And after you act on that recommendation, I'm going to be happy to introduce you to her. She's online with us right now. So she's listening to this plan and listening probably to March quarters, unfortunately. But the creation of a special education coordinator, which I talked to you about in a board update, and how we were able to do that at a very low cost to the district to have a special ed coordinator. It was recommended in the report that we actually create two based on the population of kids we have and the needs of our kids. However, again, because of our budgeting, we definitely don't have the resources to do that right now. But we were able to create one at virtually no cost to the district. So I'm excited to be able to at least do part of that recommendation. And then, once we have our new director of special education in place, it will be a task to develop kind of a three- to five-year timeline to address those recommendations in the study. You know, there's 27 things, it's hard to do 27 things in one year, nor should there be an expectation that we are doing 27 things in one year. And so to really look at those recommendations, prioritize those, and come up with how do we implement all of these recommendations in a three- to five-year timeline, which again would be up to the new director to determine with her staff what that could possibly look like over the next three to five years. And any questions you have for me?
I guess I, I'm just going to ask the first question. I know that there were timelines, like, built into the plan. Are those, do you think, pretty realistic to be able to comply with? Or were they kind of pie in the sky?
Oh, yeah. Some are. I mean, obviously, we've implemented some of those recommendations already. So I think they're reasonable. But I think that, you know, out of courtesy to our new director of special education, you know, that's an assessment that, based on everything else that is going on in that department and based on the other responsibilities, I think that's something that the special ed director and the coordinator will have to sit down and say, is this realistic? And it may be, it may be that our timeline is that timeline. But it may be that we have to adjust things because we have other fish that we have to fry too in that department and other things that are going on throughout the district. Anything else? All right.
Right, thanks. A lot, there's a lot of work ahead of us on, in the special ed area. So it's great that we were able to get such a thorough review of our programming and identify areas of improvement. And hopefully, we can move the chains coming up real soon. Thanks. All right, we're going to move on to item six, which is treasurer's announcements. Craig, you got cashless initiative and financial software update. Let's turn it over to you.
Yep, so we'll keep it really brief. Cashless initiative. Last couple of weeks, I've been just hearing a lot of, a lot of things going on. And we're trying to reevaluate all of our processes. And we'll have some more exciting announcements to make as people are right now not in, I want to go back to school mode yet. So we're going to have some announcements. And we're going to try to get our district to be cashless within two to three years. So we're working with some different vendors and trying to figure out how we can do that. Cash points are always an issue for audits. So the less cash we receive, the better. So we're going to be moving and providing options for ACH payments from parents as well as credit card payments for pay-to-participate, as well as a different system for possibly the lunchroom, as well as student fees. So I just kind of wanted to share that with the board in the direction that we're hopefully going over the next couple of years. It does take a little bit of time. But we're also going to look at ticketing for theater performances and football games and all of that stuff, especially with COVID, doing as much, the least amount of transactions as possible. So there's a lot of different technological advances that are out there that can help us basically keep that in a cashless system. And so we're going to try to move forward with some of those and working with all the various departments, you know, throughout the district. So more news will be coming soon. And then just wanted to share with everyone that we will begin our financial software implementation, training and whatnot, tomorrow. We are doing a kickoff meeting with TCCSA. So we have a lot of folks involved in that. There is myself and the rest of my support staff. We have HR involved as well, since they're going to be an integral part of how this is all going to work together. And then all the staff from TCCSA and Connect. So, and just as a reminder, TCCSA is who Connect is contracted with to help us with the conversion process, which is why we're working outside of Connect. This is something that TCCSA specializes in. So it should be a smooth transition. But we're going to meet with them tomorrow for about two hours and kind of just get the ball rolling. And then we will be going live with the software again in January of 2021. So just wanted to share that quick update with everybody. That's it.
Great. Any questions from board members? Okay.
Sorry, I have seen one, I'm sorry. I meant transition, that's a six-month transition process to get all of our information into the new system, is that right?
Yeah, so a lot of the, a lot of the stuff is a data export in terms of that transition piece. I mean, I've obviously been through this transition once. It'll be a little bit different because our district is bigger. So the data transfer, the biggest thing that you lose is you lose history. So there's really not going to be the history there. But we can still get into the old system for at least a couple of years if we need it. And then the transition part, you know, I try to give people enough notice as we go throughout. For instance, we have, you know, we really can't do any spending in December and January because we have to close all the purchase orders on the old system and then reopen them on the new system. Payroll is completely seamless. Well, at least that's what we hope for. So we do all of the testing, we do parallel payrolls. We do a pre-note with the banks to make sure people are getting their money, you know, when they're supposed to get their money. So that's, that actually should be completely seamless. The purchasing side sometimes has some disruptions in terms of transition. But I try to give people enough notice so we can prepare adequately. So it's not a huge inconvenience.
And just a question on the cashless initiative. I assume, in addition to being probably a lot easier for our families to deal with, you know, with fees and costs, that, you know, that would eventually make us more efficient and maybe reduce the amount of man-hours needed to process all of the cash transactions we do today? Is that correct?
Yes, absolutely. That's one of the things, even with the student fees, I don't think people realize, and I didn't realize, on the backend, what we're doing is taking hours upon hours upon hours of man-hours to do this in a very manual setting in addition to some of the cash points. Where we're, like, pay-to-participate gets sent into three, sometimes three or four different locations. And then by the time it gets down to the office and to the bank, and it's just, it's just not a very effective system. And so we're hoping that parents are excited about being able to go on an app, for instance, and make payments easily. And it should definitely help with our staff as well.
Yeah, no, that's fantastic. And I know, you know, on behalf of the board, thank you for your efforts so far. I think when, when the board was faced with having to bring on a new treasurer and we were able to identify you as our candidate and bring you on, I think we were all very hopeful that we could move forward in leaps and bounds from a technology standpoint and from an efficiency standpoint. And you're taking clear steps to do that. And, you know, the district is going to be much better positioned, and already is, with some of the initiatives you've been doing. So, you know, keep up the great work and, you know, let us know what you need from the board to support, you know, these ideas that will make life easier for everybody, not only our staff, but for our families and our community.
Not a problem.
Great. All right, item seven is community communications, hearing of the public. Do we have anybody teed up?
Yes, I think it's just, I think we're good. This was just from Terry Ally saying the meeting was not livestreamed in the beginning. We had some, some technical difficulties, but it is livestreaming now. So, you know, I think we don't have any public participation, I guess.
Okay. So that, since we don't have any, we'll move on to item eight, which is superintendent's personnel recommendations. We have item eight A, which is certified recommendations. B, classified recommendations. C, supplemental recommendations, although there's nothing in there. So that's just kind of a placeholder. And then the approval, so can I have a motion? Second. All right, moved and seconded. So Joelle, I'll turn it over to you to comment on these items and then see if we have any questions. You're on mute, Joelle.
Sorry. I'm going to ask if you have any questions on any of the recommendations that were made. Mr. Dosson, you are correct, there are no supplemental recommendations this month. Typically, we would have supplemental recommendations. We are holding off again on governor's guidance because, as you are aware, this past year, closing so suddenly and not really knowing what was going to happen, and then the absolute closure of school for the rest of the school year. You know, we had already board-approved several contracts for the spring season of sports and performance and all of the, all of the supplementals. And so we're holding off in hopes to get guidance to see if there's going to be any mandatory school shutdown before we go and approve any of those supplemental contracts. And that is why you don't see any on the agenda for this particular month. But definitely, there will be, you know, depending on the guidance and what that looks like, there will be some on for the July board meeting. And I will have comments after your vote on this section.
Okay, as I know, we have Cynthia, who has joined us, which we're going to be hopefully bringing on board here very shortly. So any board members have any questions? All right, Craig, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Dosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? You're muted.
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mack? Is she still on?
She's holding up a yes in her video.
It is my pleasure to introduce you to Mrs. Cynthia Tomasetti. She is going to join our team and our family as our new director of special education. And we are excited to have her. I think, I'm going to let her tell you a little bit about herself, but I think she will agree, we put her, we put all of our candidates through a ringer of an interview process and basically, you know, handed our candidates the 84-page document of the special ed audit and said, what would you do with this? So they had to come back and present to us, you know, what their findings were and, you know, how they would proceed and some suggestions they would have to address the information in their report. So Cynthia, Cindy, I know she goes by Cindy, but I don't want to be that informal. But tell us a little bit about yourself and, you know.
Sure. Well, I'm really excited to be joining the Brexhill-Roveview Heights School District. I am currently working in Esthula Area City Schools as Director of Special Education and Student Services. I've only been there for a year, but prior to that, I was at Newberry School District. I was there for five years. And during my time at Newberry, I was elementary principal. But my last three years there was elementary principal and special ed director. So I did a dual role there. I am really excited. I look forward to the challenges. You know, I thoroughly went through the report. And I feel with my experiences, this past year in the school district I'm currently at, we were, we had a state review. So I've been put through the ringer there with, you know, with the state, you know, trying to fix some complacency issues. And we've made a lot of growth this year in Esthula. So I'm excited to take the experiences I've had there and bring them to Brexhill-Roveview Heights. So I'm looking forward to joining the team.
We're excited to have you, thank you.
Great, welcome aboard, Cynthia.
Thank you.
Great to have you. We're looking for good things from you. As you can see, we have a lot of, we have a lot of room for growth. So we're hoping that you can hit the ground running and help us service our special ed community that much better.
Is she starting tomorrow?
We're working on a start date. We have a meeting scheduled July 2nd. So we're going to sit down and talk through all those and finalize those plans. But Cindy, don't feel like you have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to, but we totally understand. If you sign off, no one's going to be offended.
Thank you. Well, again, you know, I'm really excited to be joining the team. I look forward to starting soon and, you know, hit the ground running. You know, I have a lot of ideas swirling through my head, you know, of, you know, where to start and, and just get moving.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll see you soon.
All right, take care.
Great, thanks. All right, let's move on to item nine, superintendent's other business. We have nine A, ESY, ESC contract. B, STEPS contract. C, suburban transportation contract. D, Cleveland Clinic Learner School contracts. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Joelle, do you want to give a brief explanation?
Yeah, so the ESY, we've talked about ESY through the report. So we put this out to our staff to, if they want to work for our ESY services in our school program first. And then we also contract out for some of those goals that students need to work on. We contract out like OT and PT if that is required for part of ESY services. So that's what that contract addresses through our Educational Service Center. STEPS contract is a contract for a specific student. Suburban transportation, and I'm going to skip just for the- urban transportation contract is for, we have to, we have to provide transportation for some of our students who go to other placements. And we currently do not have a vehicle to do that. So we contract this service out so that we make sure that our special needs student can get to their service providers. The Cleveland Clinic Learner School contracts, we have two students who attend there. So those are specific contracts for specific students.
Okay, thanks. Board members, any questions? Okay, Craig, roll call.
Mr. Dosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mack?
She's gone dark. All right, let's move on to, to agenda item 10, treasurer's-
Yes.
Oh, yeah, there she is, yeah. Item 10, treasurer's consent agenda. We have item 10A, financial report. B, connect contract. C, FY21 high school student fees. D, Ohio Plan Proposal. E, administrative salary schedule. F, donations. G, minutes. H, FY20 appropriations measure. I, FY21 appropriations measure. J, amended certificate of estimated resources for FY20. K, amended certificate of estimated resources for FY21. And I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Craig, why don't you walk us through what's on your agenda?
Sure, there is a lot, but I will be, because we are, we basically have already wrapped up our fiscal year already. So that's kind of exciting. So in terms of the- So in terms of the, the monthly, this is for May. It is definitely an evolving process as we kind of go through the finances. They seem to change dramatically all the time. So. As we look at the, at the overall picture here, you can see that on the revenue side, we are down $363,000. Most of that is not unexpected. That's from the state. A lot of it is from the state foundation cuts. We've also issued, you know, we've started issuing and continue to mostly have finalized, but some. Funds that have come in and now are going back out. The current year to date on expenditures, we are down almost a million dollars, which is good. And I think part of that is because we basically have not bought anything. It's been very, very quiet in that department for several months due to COVID. So. I think that while we've saved a lot of that money now. I don't want to say get hammered, but we're going to definitely be spending a significant amount of money and playing catch up as we start the new fiscal year as well as. Planning for any COVID related expenses. Moving into next year and figure out what that's going to cost and what school looks like. So. Still, we have a $606,000 favorable. Piece to the cash balance. I do believe this is going to be very, very similar now that I've seen what the final numbers are basically. So, like I said, I won't dwell too, too much on this, so we're going to basically end, and, and this says we're going to end at 19,683. And I think that our final cash balance is actually going to be 19,800,000 dollars roughly. So it's actually a little bit better. When we look at the revenue, specifically in the monthly part, you can see that the, the local taxes is a huge piece there. That was again from, from. The money was received last April. This year it was received in May, that's why it was there. So if we just compare blue to blue and, and orange to orange. You can see we had a reduction. So the reduction there is the top three items you have is, are the two items for the negatives is state revenue and then all other revenue. So not, not unusual. This is, this is normal. For the most part in terms of the taxes, because those can relate and change based on how the county auditor files with those. Homestead and rollbacks, because. It depends on whether they'll come in April or May, but that's where there's a large swing of, of really $2 million in that, in that area. In terms of actual revenue received through May compared to the prior year, it's pretty consistent. We have an increase overall in the tax base. Of 2.4 million and then the state revenue, of course, is down and then all other revenue is. A little bit above average, I mean, a little bit above from where it was last year in terms of how we collected from year to year at $149,000. When we look at. When we look at the forecast as, as it's compared to the current year. Local tax revenue is very, very consistent. The state revenues, you can see, is down. Same common themes and then all other revenue is, is up. And this is just as it relates again to the forecast. Versus the, versus the actuals. And then on the expenditure side, you can really, I mean, this, it's nice to see that, I mean, not nice to see there's a. You can actually see a pretty significant decrease. So, you know, the, the blue part is salaries, which is relatively consistent. But we did save some money by, by the COVID related experience. And then purchase services are down. This is, you know, due to substitutes that are, that we, because we contract those services out as a purchase service. Through Ren Hill. And then the all other expenses is, is almost, it's almost like the green line doesn't exist. And that's just because, again, we stopped, we, we stopped spending, especially once we heard the budget cuts were coming. So. These are the actual expenses were down by 331,000 compared to last year. So the actual expenses incurred throughout May compared to the prior year. Still higher, and that's mostly related, as you see in the boxes below. That it's salaries and benefits. So this was attributed to the step increases and the, and the percentage on the base, which is. Expected and planned. That was a million and 87,000. Purchase services, as we've talked about consistently, have been, have been elevated. So I think as it compares to the. As we get closer to the forecast, we're trying to make better, better decisions on how that number is going to look as it compares to the forecast. As we analyze our purchase services, which is one of the things I said that we'll continue to do and monitor just as we go through the next year or so. And then all other expenditures are now officially down by 241,000. So this is where it kind of puts us at. Our current year to date expenditures indicate the $969,000 is favorable compared to the forecast. And it basically says that according to, from the forecast and where we are now, we're going to spend less money. So. That's a good thing. And those categories again are salaries and benefits, purchase services and all other expenditures. Salaries have tracked a little lower than the forecast. And again, we're going to try to tighten all of that up as we head into the fall. And once we have our final staffing analysis and all of that stuff, so that we can have as accurate of a picture as we can. Purchase services again was, was still up. And then all other expenditures were down. So that is that report. I think it's this one. The other reports are there just again for your reference in terms of the checks. The bank reconciliation came out perfectly fine for May. This connect contract, this is basically a three year agreement. This is our ITC. I'm going to have Bob actually talk about some of the stuff that Connect offers next month, once we get our technology report, which will be again following it will be in the July meeting. We have some really great things are happening in technology, by the way. So this is, every district has to work with an ITC. Ours is Connect. We could. Make it a competitive market and go elsewhere, but for right now, I guess, I mean, I think everyone's happy with what the services Connect is providing for us. So we're going to continue down that path for at least the next three years. The 21 high school fees, this was a long process. Again, hearing, hearing concerns, complaints. Positives, negatives, looking at the process of everything. Scott DeTrey pulled together a ridiculous amount of data. In order to, to work through some of this, and I explained this in a board update, is how we got there. So again, I think this is going to be really well received by parents. Making things simple and easy to understand. As well as just making it easier on our staff in terms of the inputting piece of it. And, you know, financially, we're going to be okay with this decision. The Ohio School Plan, kudos to Chris Code, who went through the RFP process and getting three different vendors to bid for our. Property casualty automobile, all of our insurance needs. And we had three different quotes that came in. One was our current. Provider from Todd and Associates through Liberty Mutual. We also then got quotes from the Ohio School Plan, which is a pooled consortium of school districts in Ohio, as well as Sorsa, again, a pooled consortium of school districts in Ohio. After that process kind of worked its way through, we're going to be making a switch to Ohio School Plan. It is still an increase over last year by about $4,000, but we're also going to get a credit for our Stop It app because they include that in their plan. So it's basically a net zero, whereas if we would have stayed with our old provider, it would have been. An increase in costs for our insurance needs. The administrative salary schedule is just the two updates. We've switched some responsibilities in terms of systems engineers. We've. Repurposed and kind of reorganized our technology department. And then also, this allows us to get that. Special education and preschool coordinator position. Put onto the administrative salary schedule at virtually no cost to the district. The minutes are there and then just as, these are more just housekeeping items. In, at least as far as I'm concerned. So fiscal year 20, these are, this is our final appropriations measure. So what we've done is we've, you know, we have our encumbrances, which we're carrying forward for next year. In addition to what we spent so that we are in compliance with basically the. Ohio revised code, so that our appropriations match what our spending has been. So this kind of just is a housekeeping to kind of clean up the books and make everything nice and neat. And then the fiscal 21 appropriations measure kind of gets us started for next year. We'll be making adjustments. I usually make adjustments. Somewhere around September, October, once we will kind of figure out more of and closely with where our spending and stuff is going to be after the new contracts take place. So this will get us started and again, we'll, we'll amend this as we need to. And then the certificate of estimated resources, this is. Basically how much money the district has to spend, which is your carryover balance of what you had last year in all funds. In addition to what is brought in through revenues for the current fiscal year. So that is kind of what that document does, that these both get updated at the county auditor's office, which I'll be sending off after we close the fiscal year. And again, mostly housekeeping to match all of our budgets to making sure our system is. I guess cleaned up and, and finalized for the fiscal year so that we can make a smooth transition into fiscal 21, which is. Next week, actually, so everything, everything's been very, very smooth on the closing end. Payroll is balanced. Everything has come through. The, the process has been great actually so far, so no complaints from my end. And that's it.
Great, great. Board members, questions? I'm going to ask Craig, can you go to the high school fees or the school fees?
Sure.
See. So what you're, what you're saying is, is that you're, there are a couple of big takeaways that if, if I read this correctly, one is a kind of a simplification of the fee structure. And the other is the reducing the parking fee from $100 to 50. Is that? Accurate?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to highlight that because I know. Since I've been on the board, the hundred dollars to park your car in the parking lot has, has been a pain point. For many of our families. So it's good to see that we're able to bring that down and simplify kind of back on your cashless initiative and, and. Efforts to bring us into a more efficient way to operate, more simplified, easier to deal with. This is another step in the right direction, so.
I don't know if everyone knows, but I was kind of taken aback when the high school kind of originally came and said that they have 170 different types of fees. Which I think is a crazy number, right? So when Scott did all of this analysis, we basically can get to the same place by implementing a general fee. And it's, it's going to, it's going to save again so much time from their end. I think that parents can, can understand what this is. And this goes into all kinds of. The different, the different classes that we just continue to offer. I mean, Brexwell does have. A tremendous amount of, of offerings that, that are available to our students. So. It was reasonable. It kind of gets to the same spot. And yes, parking was a huge. I, I didn't realize it was as big of an issue as it was until recently. So we have some different, you know, we're going to keep evaluating this. We have to still talk to the middle school and the elementary school. To, to kind of go through the same process. They don't have as many fees, but. We may have to look at them in July or whatnot, but again, we're going to try to make everything as simple as possible.
Craig, does anything in implementing, you know, one general fee, is there? Is there any implication that if there were as many line items, 170 line items? Of fees initially, is there, do we essentially have to go back on the backend and reallocate and redistribute? All of that funds that have gone into one pot essentially?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Yeah, I didn't ask that very well, I'm sorry. Sorry. So rather than have. Each fee for each class or subject that these students are enrolling in, and that already being identified on the front end, are we just. Reversing the process and having to redistribute on the backend?
Yes, basically. So I believe, so the way that I think they're doing it is that they're going to be distributing it by department. So the, the departments are not getting any budget cuts at all. They're just going to redistribute it through a department level versus like a specific class. If that makes sense.
So basically, we're going from 170 little buckets to here's a department allocation for your costs.
Correct. Yeah, and they'll still be able to allocate the same amount per class. If that makes sense, it's just that we're kind of just, we're doing it by the department and the department chairs will still have access and to the same exact. Spending abilities, I guess, is what I'm saying, but we're making it very simplified on the front end. So that's where we're, it's a win win for us.
Thank you.
Board, you want to switch back to the agenda, Craig? Board members, any other questions on the consent agenda?
I had some questions about the connect contract, but you said the gentleman will be in next, next month. Is that right?
Yeah, no, and you know me some questions about the connect stuff and they were great questions. Little, probably more technical than, than I even know. So yeah, Bob will be able to answer that. I'll kind of just give him a heads up. To be able to answer any questions about what we get through Connect, because it is a little bit complicated and every ITC is a little bit different.
Thank you.
Yeah, Craig, thank you for all the work for getting that streamlined.
No problem.
Hey, any other questions? Okay, roll call.
Okay, Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mrs. Kramer?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes.
All right, do you like to scroll down?
Oops, sorry.
All right, we're on closing items. We have announcements, German and roll call. So what's under announcements? The. Next regular board education. Whoops, can you go back to the announcements?
Sorry.
There you go. No worries. Our next Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, July 22nd. Anything else, Joel? Do we have anything else to announce?
I don't think so.
All right. All right, I think that's a wrap then. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Wigman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mack?
Yes. She's done. All right. Good, I think that's a wrap. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening and we'll see you next month.
Bye guys, take care.
Thanks.
Thanks, Mark.
Bye bye.